All right, let's call the meeting into order. Please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda?
We have one change, Mr. Mayor, as directed by the council during the work session. We'd like to add under reports, under administration, excuse me, no, we'll do it after all other reports.
Okay.
So, item J, continuation of discussion regarding priority policy discussions for the council over the next year.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is adopted. We have no acknowledgements or presentations, so we'll go to public comment. Is there anyone here who cares to speak at the public comment tonight? And did you, you mentioned earlier that you had something that you wanted to bring up, or no?
No.
No? So, okay. Didn't mean to call you out, just wanted to make sure you had your, had the chance, so. All right, seeing no one coming to the podium, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move on to consent. Does anyone have any items on consent agenda they'd like polled or have questions on?
I'd just like to make two comments. Shout out to chief and staff and Tom for the local statement of emergency of the last year. I know we're going to be withdrawing that, so, super shout out to the team for handling everything over the last year and a half. I think everybody did awesome. And then the second one was shout out to Rich and staff for the traffic operations, the sign issue situation request that was made. And I thought everybody handled that awesome and super excited to see that, so.
It sounded like a motion almost.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda passes. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll go into general business.
Our first item under general business is a continuation of the On-Car Holdings application for an ordinance tax amendment. At the last meeting, your presentation was provided by city staff as well as a presentation by the applicant themselves. And they've provided some supplemental information that's been included in your packet. In speaking with both staff and the applicant, they've indicated that they don't feel a need to provide a re-presentation for the council members that weren't here. So, at this point, unless the council would like them to, they would be prepared for the council to move into questions and discussion on this topic.
Okay. So, first thanks to the council that was here. Thanks to Bo for putting up with Josh, both Josh and I being out last week, I know it's kind of a, or last meeting. It can be kind of a pain to continue with this, but I appreciate everyone's patience. So, it sounded like the, so the planning commission was a little split, not unanimous on this topic. Listening to discussion at the city council meeting, it sounded like Bryce and Kate, you were kind of up a position. Maybe we need to pass on this. Mandy, you're a little uncertain. And Bo, you provided a lot of good information as to why this is something that we really should be considering, so. Now that we're here, does anyone have any additional thoughts, or are we just ready to start speaking our minds and asking questions?
Can you speak your mind and answer questions?
I get a legal question. Is there, whether, let's just hypothetically say if this was denied, are there appeal rights or any sort of measures or criteria that we need to make sure that we're basing our decision off of to maintain that decision moving forward, or anything like that?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, with zoning amendments, much like the rest of the zoning ordinance, there's a lot of legislative discretion. So, unlike when you're considering a variance or a permit, you have to weigh certain factors. In this case, that's not necessarily true. The one thing you can't do is make an arbitrary and capricious decision. It has to be the reasonable decision. But you get to use your typical zoning brains on how you want the city to look and connect that back to reason. Anything else, Tom?
The planning commission and staff and their recommendations and in the draft, findings of fact for denial that was provided based on those discussions has been provided. You can choose to use it in that form, provide additional rationale, or modify it if you're choosing to decline it, if you're choosing to approve it. The direction then would be to staff to start preparing the ordinance change that was requested. So, to answer your question, council member, I believe that if you don't have anything to add, there is sufficient information there to meet the criteria that the city attorney has discussed.
Does anyone have any other points, or any, Bo, did you have anything else you'd want to add from what you?
I mean, other than the fact that, you know, A-plus auto, I mean, they really want to be down here. I mean, they've been in business for nine years. Again, this is a temporary situation, hopefully economic conditions approved. And, you know, I mean, I think in my last statement, even if I'm talking A-plus auto, I said that we're looking for something maybe of minimum of three years. I mean, we'd even be open just to have the opportunity to see how it looks and reevaluate the economic conditions, even on a 12-month basis. I mean, just to have a shot, to go ahead and we can see how it works. I mean, again, with the stealth of doing it now, we thought everything was looking like removed before. We might be stuck on Bo here again. So, I mean, we wouldn't even be opposed to even 12 months just as probationary period to take a look at it, to see how, if it's functioning correctly, reevaluate it at that time. Economic conditions are good, you know, we would move forward with our mixed use. And then again, not to repeat myself, but this kind of, the revenue allows us to, you know, aesthetically make the building look good in the meantime and to remove the building, which will be cheaper now than it may be five or six years from now. And that helps with overall costs in the long picture, so.
Thank you. So, I, well, I'll just, I'll start talking since I'm the only one kind of rambling right now, but I want A-plus auto to be able to have a nice car dealership in town. I can't get past it being in downtown Elquid Market. I, I think we've put a lot of thought and a lot of care into the ordinances that we've put together into how things are zoned. Every, every campaign I've been on, and I'm knocking on doors, residents are asking, well, how exactly are you going to control development? And how exactly is this? This ain't answer every time. You've put a lot of thought and you put a lot of care into the zoning. What, you try and think of the things that no one else is going to think of, any potential pit hole, pitfalls that could come up. And I'm really hesitant to go against what's currently allowed within the zoning, even though I very much want businesses in town. And I certainly can appreciate that you've invested money into this location and want to continue investing money into the location. But I'm not comfortable approving the amendment. That's my position. Josh?
Yeah.
How's it going?
Fantastic.
The other three council members had a chance to talk, or?
No, I understand.
Just take your time, though.
I will. No, I mean, and I don't, I, I struggle with this one because I don't disagree with the logic of the request. And the interimness, if that's a word, of the request for this specific location and this specific business makes sense in my brain as well. Where I struggle is though the broader impact or the broader implication of changing the zoning ordinance to open it up completely. And I don't believe there's a way that we can, you know, really specify it to that particular location, that particular business. And that's where I get stuck, and I don't want to turn away business at all. And I think that's what we've been really trying to figure out creative ways to allow for as much business to come into this community and provide additional amenities and resources and everything for residents. So, I mean, I struggle with it because I can see how it makes sense. And I want to do everything that we can to facilitate businesses to thrive and to, and I understand the, this is a temporary step to get us to where we want to be with the zoning and mixed resident, or mixed commercial and everything and the intent of the B-2 district. But I struggle with just the broader implications of it and can't really chirp and make it specific to that. And, yeah, I mean, it was really on the fence. You know, there's, there's other pieces to it that push me towards the other side, though, of some of the challenges that may have occurred with the business, current businesses, owners and not complying or perceived, whatever, allegedly not complying with some of the things that are already in place, so, yeah. I'm definitely leaning towards not supporting it, but it's not a slam dunk type of thing either.
Mandy, you were a little unsettled, or a little on the fence a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, and I think that the, I mean, something that Bryce, the last, last meeting that resonated with me was, you know, the comp plan, the planning commission, zoning, all the things that come into play are there for a reason and are well thought out. And so, I mean, for me, I would be in the same place as you.
Are we ready to call for a vote? Okay. So, from a procedural standpoint, if we're, I guess we're calling for a vote on the, on what exact, there's no ordinance, or just the tax amendment?
Correct. So, what the council would be doing is, correct me if I'm wrong, we have, but you would be adopting the findings of fact for denial of the request. First, as first part of the motion, the second part of the motion would be to deny.
Tell you what, why don't you just read off what we're supposed to do and we'll just follow that.
Motion to adopt the findings of fact for denial.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the second motion, just to be clear, motion to deny the request for the tax amendment.
So moved.
Do you not want that one?
Second.
Second by Bryce. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Are we good?
Yep.
I'm sorry, Bo.
No, no problem.
I appreciate the effort. Okay, under reports?
I have nothing specific under administration, I have these questions.
Public works, Corey, please.
Did people have a chance to look at my memo or my report at all, my chance?
I didn't, actually.
In particular, wondering if anybody had any questions about the mobile field force and kind of, I know Joe, you were on the executive board and I was kind of going through. Just a quick synopsis is, we tried for about a year and a half, or so, to create a joint powers agreement where we would create a mobile field force team that would be paid for by all the cities and every year would be contributed to by all the cities and all the members of both Scott and Carver County. I'll go real quick if you guys can.
It's not even in the packet.
It used to live at two, like.
Oh.
I thought you said.
I was going to say, I missed it. And I totally.
I felt guilty for like the quick start.
So, but Linda, did you email me stating it wasn't going to be in the packet?
No.
So, Tom came back a day earlier. I thought it was going to be included in this packet, so I apologize. So, just real quick, and then I'll rewrite it for next. Mobile field force, it just, it came to be too big of a task for everybody to sign on to. A couple of the big players, Carver and Scott County, were not going to be a part of the JPA due to the complexities of it. So, therefore, we have two real models. One was a joint powers agreement, the other was a mutual aid model. And so, Ennepin County and Anoka County operate under a mutual aid agreement. That's where each individual city pays for its own protective gear, its own training, and then all the partners come together when needed. And that's very similar to what you saw in Brooklyn Center. So, that's the model we're going to go after. The big sword that kind of killed the JPA model was the insurance. It was six times as much as what the SWAT team pays for insurance.
Wow.
Because of our current climate and everything going on with lawsuits, so it's better and more financially stable to operate under the mutual aid. If shock at the Valley Fair has a riot where they need mutual aid, they will put out an all-call page. All the cities that have trained staff and equipped staff will respond. And so, it's very similar. Luke is taking the lead for Scott County, and the sheriff's department will coordinate training and paging out of people. And the sheriff's department will take the lead in Carver County. Both of these entities, the sheriff's departments already have solidified mobile field force units, but they're smaller and they send them around the state when they're needed to help other sheriff's departments. So, we're going to operate under that model. The goal being that should something happen, a tornado come through Elquid Market and take out a certain neighborhood, we can hit that panic button, mobile field force will assemble, help with security going in and out of the neighborhoods and what have you. Same thing if we have an incident that was a high profile and rioters and protesters started coming, we'd be able to hit that same button. And we're anticipating max will be about 200 to 250 officers will be on this team once a few years pass and we can get budget to buy protective helmets and equipment, gas masks and gear to help control protests. So, it's been a long effort, and I was really bummed when the insurance came back and it just put the nail on the coffin. But I think we're going to be way better off than we were two years ago with the coordination that we're going to have with everybody, so.
The biggest difference between the two, the two efforts is the JPA and associated insurance for that organization provides a certain level of indemnification related to liability for the actions of that entity when it's functioning as part of the mobile field forces under the JPA. Under a mutual aid situation, there's no indemnification. Everybody gets sued anyways, but if somebody else has an insurance policy and they indemnify you under that insurance policy, that's great. And there's more pockets to pay. Under mutual aid, if you go and something happens when you go for mutual aid and one of our officers is involved in something in a protest, we get sued. But we have insurance for those types of things, doesn't mean that there aren't costs associated with it. One of the things we have to keep in mind, though, is that we have mutual aid right now. We could just as easily right now be assisting the state patrol on a pursuit on 35 and be involved in a use of force incident. We could get sued there, too. So, we just have to realize that this is less than the more ideal option, but the numbers with it just make it completely impractical. It's not financially feasible under that situation. So, that's just something we would have to recognize going into it. And it's more of an issue now because, you know, five years ago, yeah, mobile field force is going out because there's 10 people with signs or there's a tornado. You're not as worried about it as you are in today's climate, so.
Well, I think we've gone a bit far from the mutual aid. In fact, we are such a small community, smaller apartment.
Now, Brady, you have a current existing utility agreement set.
Yes, there was, there's really no need to modify it because it's basically saying, one agency needs help, they put out a call and everybody will go. So, there's really no difference in how we operate right now, so the process is, no need for a separate mutual aid.
So, bigger challenge is going to be making sure that you work through interoperability issues, that if you have a centralized management of the mobile field force, you make sure consistency of training and all of that. Now, it's going to rely a little bit more on goodwill to make sure that everybody's participating. It's manageable, it's just, again, not quite as ideal as the other.
I have a quick question. What did you ever figure out about all the fencing that you were talking about last time?
So, fencing, we basically led that work group and we met with the city administrators and then it's, we kind of knocked the ball over into their court. We formulated two models. One is where, yeah, we talked about it, the management meeting. 3,000 linear feet of fence would be purchased and stored someplace, either at a bunch of locations or one location. Then each individual city will get contracts for emergency fencing on their own as well to supplement. If we have an incident in Elquid Market, we only need 1,200 linear feet of that at the most, might even be less. So, therefore, there'd be all that other linear feet that could help the government center protect themselves where the courthouse is and the jail. And then they would only need to rent a smaller amount, which would save a lot of money. The costs are absorbing it. The type of fencing we would need is a lot different than the courthouse would need. So, that's kind of the model that we suggested, we kicked off, and now it's going to be up to the executive committee to make determination. Do we want to invest in this large amount of security fencing? And then contract, how do we want to handle that?
So, really, it hasn't moved forward at all much?
Not yet, and it can't because the decision makers have to make the decisions. We only made our recommendations and then kicked that off.
Everybody's going to go chew on it over July, and at the August meeting, they'll come back and people are supposed to have done their internal homework with regards to discussions, reviewing the proposal with questions or concerns or suggestions that they have, so.
Okay, cool.
And our brand new officer, Mountan Moser, has started and is going to be in uniform starting tomorrow. They came in. So, a couple of common questions, yes, he is 18 or older. Looks extremely young, and we're going to get a lot of comments on that, but he is doing very well so far, getting along with everybody. And he helped me his first day do a presentation at the school for three and four-year-olds to see. And he got a nice big hug already, which was great. And one of the children named him Ruby, which is, might be his new nickname.
Is that, that sticking?
So, a little bit. There's some other ones that we can discuss. And he has an uncanny likeness to Ed Norton as well, so that's going to be something. And when we do, I think, the first meeting in August, we're going to hopefully do our swearing-in and badge painting at this schedule level, so.
An official nickname, at that point.
I think you could, like, grant nickname, you know, like, nickname.
We can do that. We'll figure something out.
What shift is he working?
He's going to be working the after, like, late afternoon shift, so 1 to 11 right now. But because of vacations, he's going to be working a lot at 3 to 1s, so.
Good to know. I seem to be breaking in some of the new officers, so maybe they have to pull me over, pull me over as well.
What's it going to take to get you to keep your garage?
Oh, no, it's not the garage, no.
Oh.
Actually pulled over?
Just on, on the spot training, field training. Customer service training, you know.
You say field training, not fields of variety training.
Correct, correct, correct.
Okay, good. But other than that, open for questions?
Thank you. Assuming nothing for fire.
Just that our three new firefighters have started. They've gone through, they're going through orientation, so they'll be at their first fire meeting next week.
Nice.
Mayor?
I don't have hug and nickname stories, but I would like to talk about our project just for a little bit. We'll put in about 10,000 feet of pipe, give or take. And about one-third of that is going in by horizontal directional drilling. Some of you might know what I'm talking about. Basically, that's where you sit on the ground and you drill horizontally instead of down. You might go down and then turn and come out the other end, 1,000 feet away, grab a piece of pipe that's already been fused together and drag it back through that hole, not disturbing anything that was over the top of it, like a freeway or a big hill or county road or gravel road that you wanted to keep intact. The horizontal directional drilling work is now complete.
Nice.
That was the work we were all most concerned about because you can't see what's down there. You're taking it on faith that they're going to be able to still steer this thing where it's supposed to go at the right depth, the right grade, the right direction.
And not going to hit all those rocks.
We did hit a lot of rocks, but they worked through it, they got through it. So, that is good news. The remaining two-thirds, Tom Ryan thinks will take two weeks, I think it might be more like three. But that involves just digging a hole, putting on the pipe, covering it up, which is not easy, but it's much less worrisome than drilling a hole under Interstate 35 that's this figure out and pulling the pipe through it. So, we're feeling pretty good about how the job's going.
So, do you have a legit bet with Tom? Is there over/under that you should be betting on, two or three weeks?
He's unresponsive when I offer any sort of. So, no.
Couple actual questions. Related to 275th. Is, I see they've been doing some work on fixing some areas of 275th. Is that a concern that that whole road is going to be like that because, and I should start getting paid for mileage or commission because I seem to do that route between the two construction sites with my three-year-old every morning just to kind of look and see how everything's going and looking at the trucks. But is that a concern that we have, that there's so many areas already breaking down, or was that kind of planned for, or?
It wasn't planned for, and I don't remember exactly who was involved in those discussions, it was a while back. Our objective was not to create a bulletproof road from the get-go. It was to put the resources into a road that could sustain a 40 mile per hour design speed. So, we wanted the sharp curves eased, the steep hills and sharp crests and sags eased, and put the money into that with just a minimal pavement because it's easy to add pavement. It's very hard after the pavement's down to straighten the road or take out curb. So, that's where the resource went. I walked that road personally with the developer before paving and to check the hardness of the class five, the grading, the base that goes under the paving, he had to use a cordless drill, hammer drill, to drill through it. So, it was hard, but there were some spots that had for years exhibited frost, eaves and stuff. That's now being dug out. So, my gut feel is we probably are getting, there may be some showing up. We may want to look at an overlay on that road in a couple of years to add that extra strength. We didn't know how much traffic would go there. Turns out, I may have been wrong. I thought there wouldn't be much change, but apparently there's a lot of traffic.
It's me.
Well, not wrong. You're ruining a road.
Just observation, there's a lot of people that can go. But I want to reemphasize, when we were looking at the cross-section, it was more towards the end of cost-effective versus long-term guarantee.
And then the second question, so as you turn into Boulder Heights down on that bottom, is there anything that needs to be done? Because it's like a ginormous puddle all after any rain and it gets pretty deep with water. And I don't know if there's a drain. I can't see it because it's a good 10-foot radius of puddle now, six inches.
This is in Boulder Heights at a low point, there's certainly a drain, probably one on each side. It may be obstructed right now because of sediment protection for the grading and housing work that's going on. But in the long run, those should drink water and you shouldn't have standing water at the low point, so it's a great.
I mean, it's fun to drive through now and get it splashed up, and my kid likes it, but assume it's not supposed to be like that long-term.
My best guess is that it's an interim condition.
Josh.
I did, I floored.
Anything else for Rich?
No. Sorry.
All right, thanks, Rich. Tree development. Thank you. Parks?
Mayor, council members. So, I was here with you guys on April 8th and we went over some basic costs for installing banners, banner arms, and holiday lighted decorations. And after our discussion, we were directed to pursue the cost in purchase of the banner arms, banners and holiday lighting. So, I mentioned this back in April, but. So I mentioned this back in April, but to make sure that we don't install banner arms, they're going to cause damage to our light poles, scratching and so on. We tried to stay consistent with the same vendor and the same product. So whatever banner arms we install, again, not any issues with any liabilities or long-term damage. So Fresco Incorporated is that local vendor, and they sent us pricing and different sizing options. My, my suggestion is that we go with the eighteen-inch banner arms and that we get two of those. We had originally looked at the possibility of doing a double banner arm on the top so that we could use that other side to hang holiday lighting decorations from. After investigating some different options, we kind of moved away from that option. Talking to Cory, Public Works team, so we'll come back to that in a minute. But so this is what that would look like. Here's an example. Elk River and that double, or it's two single banner arms and what that would look like with the banner there. The price is a little bit, it went up a little bit in two thousand twenty-one. And it's continuing to go up, so the sooner we order those, the better. But if we get two of those per light pole, the cost per light pole is three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And my suggestion is that we get a hundred of those, so we'd have six extra should anything go wrong or break over the lifespan. For the banners, I contacted three different vendors that specialize in street banners. And I collected pricing from each of them. What I brought in here to show you guys is a couple of different options. So this, these are the two kind of industry standards right now. This is what they call, it's kind of like a boat cover, marine acrylic. And so the material's a little, I guess, a little more forgiving in terms of bending and weather and so on. And then this is what a lot of cities are purchasing now. It's kind of a combination of, it actually has this marine acrylic fabric sewn in between here. And then this outside material is like a canvas material that allows them to do really detailed printing on it. So you guys can see, so you can do a full digital printing. This is more of a one, two, three-color print, you know, so you're a little restricted in what you can do on the marine acrylic. These, these tend to last a little bit longer from what I've been told. But these still have the same warranty as the marine acrylic. So this is the size, the eighteen-inch by thirty-six-inch, just to give you guys a little reference of what we would be looking at getting. So those are, again, those are the industry standards. The older models are more of a vinyl approach. That's what, that's what this is here. These, as they get stored and stuff, tend to crack and wear down a little bit faster.
And I know you talked about this before. How, like, what's the maintenance or the replacement time period for something like that? I mean, fading and just whatever?
Yeah, so they have a, the banners have a three-year warranty on them. From what I've heard from other cities, they last much longer than that, especially if we're careful when we storm and, but yeah, there's a three-year warranty minimum on those. Yeah, so in terms of pricing. So again, my recommendation, there's all, a whole variety of different size options that we can get from custom to stock. A standard stock size is the eighteen-inch by thirty-six-inch. So if we do get a stock-sized banner for some of the holiday or patriotic options that we're considering, we can actually save money because they make stock, winter patriotic, summer banners versus what we were originally looking at was like a twenty-two, twenty-four-inch width, which would be a custom size. So for the city logo banner, and I'll show you an example of what that'll look like. But my suggestion is that we go with the polycanvas acrylic, which is, again, this version here, which allows them to be a little more specific, and we can actually design exactly what we want. So the company that we're looking at going with sent a sample design after coming up with a couple of different ideas. So that was their first, first approach. Once we choose a vendor and we decide to move forward, all three of the different vendors were very flexible and can obviously work to tweak, adjust the design as we want. So, but Main Street Designs, which is actually, they distribute nationally. They're one of the biggest companies, but they're actually based out of Minnesota, which is kind of nice. So the pricing was pretty competitive. So to get fifty-five custom digital print on that polycanvas came out to sixty-three dollars each. Again, here's a sample. We can adjust if we'd like. And again, if we do get the eighteen-inch width, that allows us to do stock or purchase stock options for holiday, winter, summer, spring, fall, you name it. So here's just a couple of examples there. But if we do go with the stock size, those come out to fifty-one dollars each. And those, I would suggest, are my, because we can, and we can save a little bit of money, but that's the fifty-one-dollar stock would come on this material here. So it does, you know, one or two color print on this material. And again, these are a little bit, because we would be taking these down, putting them up more frequently, these are a little more durable, I guess, to bending and such. All right. So our, our prices actually came down a little bit for the banners. What we had originally looked at for the holiday lighting options was a cheaper approach. And in talking to some other cities, and again, talking to Public Works, the direction, if we are going to get holiday lighting, is to do something that's going to be a little more expensive, but a lot easier on Public Works. These, these light products are a little more durable. They last a bit longer. And again, the application, I guess I can kind of show you guys here how that'll work. But so this frame piece here, you see this little bracket here. Public Works would do a one-time install, and these will be powder coated with black paint and be installed, installed to the side of the light poles. And then this clicks right into here. Oops, I'm not doing that right. But anyways, this clicks right into there. They pop them back out. So the install is super easy each year. And again, Cory contacted a few other cities, and a lot of them are using this approach. Again, the downside to these is that they're almost three times as expensive. So again, what we had originally looked at for lighting was a little bit cheaper. But so this, what you see here on the right is this one right here, this sample. So it's got the white and the blue lights. And then the one on the left is a little bit simpler, a little bit cheaper. So if we were to get fifty-five of those, those would be the cost per unit there.
Long and short, you get what you pay for. A cheaper option results in a lot more labor time, not just for installation and removal, but also for repairing the maintenance to basically get them back into shape and operation for the next season.
Yeah. Yeah, and talking to, Farnesville takes a cheaper approach. They have their lights, I think, to cost them a hundred dollars for their lights, where they spend a lot of time installing, taking them down. They actually contract out a company that comes and does that added cost as well. And they told us that they're constantly repairing the lights that they have because they bend or just cheaply bug. So here's our, our base cost. So if we just wanted to get two single banner arms for each pole and then the digital printed with the city logo, we'd, again, be getting a hundred of the single arms and fifty-five of the city logo banners. That cost comes out to twenty thousand three sixty-five. Now, it doesn't include shipping for the banners or the banner arms.
And it's not, we don't get two of the single banner arms then, where it gets you to that three, whatever it was, three seventy-eight?
There's forty-seven light poles, right?
Yes.
At two per, so it's three seventy-eight per light pole.
Yep.
Got it. That's why there's a hundred.
Yeah.
No, no, that's good.
And that's forty-seven throughout the entire city, right?
Correct.
Do we want to lower the scope of this? So it's just on County Road Two or?
Yeah, I would prefer just doing County Road Two.
So the, oh, it doesn't like falls on Church Street, I believe, somewhere in that. Do you recall, Rich? Is that all right?
Actually, I think there's maybe three or four.
Three or four. But we could, we could look at just doing.
Maybe ninety-one.
Looking at that, the lake here on one, I mean, there's kind of like an ombre colored scheme. Were they able to do the, the sample that you had on that marine rather than the canvas?
Our city logo version of that, or? They could to an extent, but it would be a, like, if you want to get like a digital print or a print on a t-shirt or something, they charge by the ink color. And it's like a, you know, one-hit, two-hit for each color. So if I go back, you wouldn't be able to do, like, this background. It's kind of like a faded light blue color, you know, and some of those transitional colors and stuff wouldn't be able to be done. We'd have to be very specific with our, you know, if we wanted to choose three colors, for example. One of the issues that they ran into there is we have a very unique set of colors for our logo. And so for them to have a good background color, we want to try and avoid white because that'd get dirty really fast. But then, you know, the other options, it's tough to get our logo on a background color on that marine acrylic that looks great. So that was one of the challenges.
Just like the idea that that lasts longer.
Well, these, these are pretty durable. They, again, most cities are getting those now, like polycanvas ones. That's the way the industry is moving. So there's, again, base costs. And if we wanted to bring that down in terms of the number of banners that we got and banner arms, we could definitely do that. So then we can ramp up accordingly if we wanted to. We had talked about doing some, potentially doing some seasonal or patriotic banners as well. So I kind of showed you guys here what that might look like. So if we wanted to do, you know, let's say we just wanted to do winter-themed banners and we got fifty-five of those or maybe less. And then so on and so forth. So if we wanted to do a winter banner and a patriotic banner, you're looking at a hundred and ten of those and your added cost. If we wanted to do a winter, patriotic and summer, and then the two different price points for the different, the two different snowflake options.
So I'm going to, could you do, if we're just doing Highway Two, could you do every other light pole with the snowflake? And then the every other one that doesn't have the snowflake has the winter to help reduce that price? But you're still using both? Or is that going to look stupid? What?
No, that's.
Is that what you were thinking too? Okay.
My little cost-effective. When this first came up, I looked at what other cities do with the decoration on it.
Do you think?
You really, I mean, if you look at the real distance, it's a substantial difference between.
We've already. It's not like they're super cross, so we, instead of boop, 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 it goes boom, 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 to try and reduce the number of light poles.
Oh, so one side will have all snowflakes, the other side would not. It would look really ridiculous, basically, if you're going. Okay.
All or nothing. I guess, I guess I would go to, what is our budget? I mean, are we comfortable with fifty grand all in? Are we comfortable with twenty-five grand? I mean, we can shave a thousand here, two thousand there. I mean, and we're nitpicking at a certain point. So what are we comfortable with and what's fit within that box?
It's all reserves.
Yeah, so that was our next slide there. So again, we could fall somewhere between on the low end, that twenty-three thousand dollars, if we just did the two banner arms, a banner for each pole, upwards of close to fifty-five thousand dollars if you want, you know, to match with pre-seasonal and the most expensive holiday lighting.
So basically, if we want just two, you said that would be about half, so we'd be at twenty-five thousand instead of fifty-four?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, the twenty-two is, is that just the banners and arms?
It's just the.
Yeah, that's the base cost for just the.
Elk River Market.
That'd be a banner, two banner arms, and then a banner for, the city logo banner for each light pole.
No lights.
What one would suggest for order of progression, if you want to do more, is you do the base. Then you'd add the seasonal to decorations. Then you'd add the winter seasonal banner. Then you'd enter the patriotic banner. And then that other summer seasonal is just any other banner you want to do. Like, you want to do a fire rescue days banner or something like that. But we would recommend, if you want the decorations, do this regular city banner and the decoration. And then if you're going to do another one, what most, what we found when we asked around, and this isn't quite, it means a comprehensive survey. Most people have like a winter banner that they put up basically from Thanksgiving till, you know, February or March first.
The winter banner beats out putting up the cool snowflake?
No, that would be after the snowflake.
Okay, after the snowflake.
Snowflake first, then winter banner, then patriotic banner.
I'm anti-smoke.
Maybe you need to plug it in and turn the lights off so you can actually see what it looks like, get the full effect.
I just didn't have anything to say, and it was.
Wow.
All right. I see the headlines in the paper, "Mayor hates."
I take it a step further, "Mayor hates Christmas."
Mayor hates Christmas.
Bah humbug.
So we're, we're funding this out of reserves. And I think we've talked about this before. I mean, we're, there's some ongoing expenses, but there's not really huge ongoing expenses. And we do have the money in reserves to do this. So money isn't really a huge issue for this project.
How much money is in reserves again, refreshment money?
What I would recommend is we take it off the top on whatever we have for the annual sweep after audit's done. That number is still getting refined. We would have sufficient dollars to do any of these. It's just a question of how much you have left over in the sweep to do other stuff.
So I, I, I'm fine with whatever we decide to do, just as long as we keep it along County Road Two and don't go too far beyond that.
I'm cool with that. County Road Two with Elk River Market and snowflake.
Yeah, great.
And one for above Joe's bed and bed room, so he wakes up in the morning.
Anyone opposed to that? Then we just.
I just can't get over the cost of the snowflake.
I know.
Yeah, they're really expensive. So again, the nice part is that we'll probably save money in terms of the installation and.
There's some of the other options because these are going to be super easy to install.
What's the warranty on the snowflake again?
Three years.
Three years of banner. The, the snowflakes, I think, are ten-year warranties.
I'm still.
It's better, yeah.
I, I would opt for the white-only snowflake for purposes of cost. Because I just, I don't want to be cost of the snowflake, but.
We're talking like sixty bucks a year. So you're going to pay over sixty dollars in labor installing the other one.
Who's powder coating these? They're going to come powder coated, or are we doing that?
These, so these come powder coated in black color.
Okay.
And then these are what are used to install in most cities, just spray painting them, although it's only been looking at a new cut black version of this. So, but he said currently, see, who's spraying these black color, then I'll be just going to be black.
What exactly is that then?
This thing is what attaches it to the pole.
I can't see it. I'm sorry.
So actually, the initial installation, which would be by our staff, they're there. So all they have to do when painting the snowflakes is the holiday decorations. Let's plug it in, let's plug it in, let's plug it in.
All right.
Did we decide on anything? I don't know what you decided.
I think the city banner.
So are we, are you guys solid with that?
City banners.
City banner and blue and white snowflakes to start with?
And we don't want any other winter patriotic, Henry?
No.
And you wouldn't be, so if we can't put snowflakes on every other thing, we wouldn't be able to do like every other winter banner, leaving some of the city banner stuff either? Because that would look silly based on Christmas.
I think we can order more banners, kind of whatever we want.
Well, because those ones are stacked, yeah.
Yeah.
So what we, so what we would do is based on this, our plan would be to finalize a budget for this. And when we do the sweep, we would sweep the appropriate initial purchase amount into capital outlay. And when we go into the 2022 budget, we would basically figure out how much we need to put away on an annual basis to perpetually replace everything based on the purchase cost.
So we offset the cost by those running for office to rent some of these bowls to put up a, "Elect Josh Bourg as Mayor" banner?
There you go.
We could, but we get into first amendment.
Oh. Yeah, some official announcement right there.
Got it, got it, got it.
Would they also have to offer?
That sounded like an official announcement, Josh.
True, true.
That's the, who is that?
I'll just throw that out there.
I did.
Sufficiently high enough for kids not to dump that, correct? Kids can tell on our resource rule.
They might like strap a string, a rope around one side, go across and just kind of bungee across the two?
Zip line.
Zip line, yeah.
Alright, how are we doing?
Alright, sorry.
Are we, are we good or?
Moving on.
So, so we want uh, the banner arms, the city banner and the lights. Do you guys like the white and blue?
Yep.
Yep, for Highway 2.
No, County Road 2, no seasonal, patriotic banners anymore.
Not right now.
Not yet.
And we don't want 91?
No.
With all the two or three lights that are on?
No, these will just be the decorative ones.
Just be decorative ones for 91 through Webster.
Yep.
Okay.
For the poles, we'd pay $40,000 for that.
Yep. Yes.
Alright.
Perfect. Awesome, thank you, great presentation.
Um, do you guys want a Park's update?
Sure.
Um, so, um, I'd like to thank all you guys for coming out to the Rubik's Cave for the farmer's market. Um, we kind of have a slower last couple of weeks with the heat and the drought with vendors from what I've been told. Uh, but today, the number of vendors actually went back up again, which is nice to see. And what I was told, I'm out there towards the end of the day at 5:00 and uh, they said the traffic was really good all day today.
Good.
We did a Facebook Live, um, maybe you saw that.
That's good.
A little vendor spotlight. And so we're going to try and do that each week, uh, right before it starts with each of the vendors to just try and draw them up a little more promotion. Um, they seemed to really like that, so um, we'll keep doing that each week and hopefully, again, spikes interest. Um, um, we had our, our Rad Zoo event, I think had the biggest attendance of our family fun nights that we've had. It had over 250 people.
Wow.
Which was crazy, uh, last week, uh, which was fun to see. I think it, part of that was the fact that it was tied to uh, the um, uh, fire rescue days promotion that went out. But um, yeah, that was fun to see. And um, we're also looking at replacing some of the equipment at Wagner Park. And so we've been collecting feedback from the community. Um, we, we put up some signage at our family fun night events and had kids come up and put stickers on the equipment that they liked or wanted to see. And uh, we just put up an online poll as well. Um, we've already gotten some, some uh, feedback via that as well. So um, yeah, we should be seeing something about that shortly.
Yeah, very nice.
Alright, yeah, thanks everybody.
Mayor, may I add something else I forgot earlier?
Sure.
Uh, the track this weekend is having a Menard sponsored race car.
Arca Race Series.
What's the name?
Arca.
Arca.
Yep.
Thank you, I was having trouble when I was talking to Robin earlier. Biggest point, um, don't be alarmed, we're doing a Facebook, Haley's doing a Facebook rollout tomorrow. They're going to have a helicopter providing live coverage of the race.
Oh, cool.
And it's going to be up from about 9:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And we're alerting the public through Facebook to let them know it's not police activity, right? So we're good. No call at 11:30 at night and everything's fine.
How last year bought it?
No, it was the Robert.
Oh.
The Robert. And we did not know that they were setting up the helicopter, so it was news to us, so. Um, but that does genuinely cause alarm in the community when they hear a helicopter burlong come on time. So Haley, we've already crafted a Facebook poll to feel alert. The track was awesome and calling us and letting, letting us know that was going to happen. So um, it's going to be a big event, it's going to be great, but like your friends, like Facebook, you know, everybody know that it's all cool and it's all for the raceway, so.
Okay.
Burning lots of fuel.
Yep.
And it, that's the most it will be up is from 9:00 until 11:00. They don't think it'll be that long, but they're just providing live coverage of it from up on top. It's up first, I think, for the track and it's cool.
Cool.
Can I go back to Parks real quick, so I was rereading through this? Is the Twins thing this weekend at Wagner Park? And here it says it potentially was at Eagle View, but I got the email confirming my kid's supposed to be at Wagner Park at 9:00?
Uh, so we registered in the confirmation email said Wagner?
Yep.
Uh, that's good. So it was moved to Eagle View.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so that, that must have been auto-generated from the Twins that they.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll have to follow up with them.
They might want to update, and maybe, I skimmed my emails.
I know they updated.
So they may have said Eagle View. I'm just throwing it out there, I think it's at Eagle View or at Wagner, so I told my wife to bring them there and.
Well, I know they updated their website, but they maybe didn't update like the confirmation email information.
Okay, FYI.
Yeah, that's good to know.
Alright, CTC.
Well, we would like to report about fire rescue days, but the parade was canceled, unfortunately.
So lots of candy for Halloween.
And um, yeah, which has been sorted, thank you.
Linda, staff, thank you, staff. Um, I have nothing else to say because I don't know when the next meeting is. July 20th. Is that correct?
Alright. Uh, probably skip over the scale one since there's no scale in July. It's Tommy had something for students to learn.
We already covered it, it was the nice time.
MVTA?
No report.
I-35?
Next meeting is September.
Chamber, anyone want to speak on behalf of the chamber? No? Okay. Alright, so last thing is continuing what was left of our workshop. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Well, any discussion by council?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any discussion by council before Kate jumps down our throats? We have a motion to adjourn on the table.
Second.
Second by Bryce, all in favor?
Aye.